Regular meeting number 55 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
Let us pray. Merciful God, the members of Columbus City Council meet tonight to consider the business of our city during a time of great suffering, fear, and confusion abroad in our world today. The senseless shootings in Paris, San Bernardino, and elsewhere, the ongoing immigration crisis here and Europe and the Middle East, the threat of terrorism, both by ISIS and by domestic terrorists, natural disasters, and other problems and challenges cannot escape our concern or our attention. In the midst of all of this, our Catholic Church begins a Holy Year of Mercy tomorrow, our Jewish brothers and sisters are celebrating Hanukkah, and the Christian world continues to celebrate the season of Advented anticipation of the annual celebration of Christmas. In the midst of all this, Almighty God, we ask you to inspire all people to turn their thoughts and actions to expressions of peace and harmony, that all of us may become constructive instead of destructive, and that people of goodwill will unite to share the ongoing work of reconciliation, healing, and peace. May our attention this holy season also be directed to our brothers and sisters on the margins of society, the poor, the voiceless, the young, the homeless, and the forgotten. May we do what we can in our corner of the world to make a difference for the good and in this way be witnesses of hope in our hurting and troubled world. Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with each of us. Amen.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
This week's communications received by the City Clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Are there any resolutions or announcements for members of council? Councilmember Harden? Councilmember Klein? Councilmember Page? Councilmember Paley?
Thank you, Council. President Ginter, tonight I have one announcement, and I would like to ask everyone to stand and observe a moment of silence as we commemorate Pearl Harbor Day, December 7, 1941. I echo the remarks of President Obama, and I quote, "On December 7, 1941, our nation suffered one of the most devastating attacks ever to befall the American people. In less than two hours, the bombs that rained on Pearl Harbor robbed thousands of men, women, and children of their lives. And little more than a day, our country was thrust into the greatest conflict the world had ever known. And we mark this anniversary by honoring the patriots who perished more than seven decades ago, extending our thoughts and prayers to the loved ones they left behind and showing our gratitude to a generation of service members who carried our nation through some of the 20th century's darkest moments." In his address to the Congress, President Franklin D. Roosevelt affirmed, "With confidence in our armed forces, with the unbounding determination of our people, we will gain the inevitable triumph." Millions stood up and shipped out to meet that call to service, fighting heroically on Europe's distant shores and pressing island by island across the Pacific. Million more, millions more carried out the fight here at home, building the arsenal of democracy that propelled America to the victory President Roosevelt foresaw. Today, we saw solemn tribute to American sons and daughters who made the ultimate sacrifice at Oahu. As we do, let us also reaffirm that their legacy will always burn bright, whether in the memory of those who knew them, the spirit of service that guides our men and women in uniform today, or the hearts of our country they kept strong and free." Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Ryan? Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, I have a resolution. It's Resolution 0271-X-2015. It's to recognize the Columbus Safe Routes to School program and to support the efforts it has made to ensure the safety, health, equity of students in the Sea of Columbus. I'm going to ask Alex Smith and Maria Rupe to come to the podium, please. The resolution reads, "Whereas the Columbus Safe Routes to School program in partnership with Columbus City Schools strives for each student to be highly educated, prepared for leadership and service, and empowered for success as a citizen and global community that supports and enhances safe walking and biking to school by focusing on health and equity through engineering, enforcement, evaluation, education, and encouragement. And whereas obesity is one of the most serious threats to the American public health, ranking third among preventable causes of death in the United States, and whereas motorcycle crashes also are a leading cause of death and injury to children. Whereas between 1969 and 2014, the percentage of children walking and biking to school dramatically declined from 48% to less than 13%. And whereas the Safe Routes to School program created by Congress in 2005 aims to increase the number of children engaged in active transportation when traveling to school by funding, one, infrastructure projects located within two miles of a public school that directly increase safety and convenience for public school children walking and/or biking to school, and two, infrastructure projects designed to encourage public school children to walk or bike to school. Whereas the Safe Routes to School projects are a prudent, effective approach to increasing the number of children actively traveling to school by foot or bike. And whereas Safe Routes to School projects provide important health, safety, and environmental benefits for the children, including reducing the risk of obesity and chronic disease and pedestrian bicycle injuries, as well as improving air quality. And Safe Routes to School projects provide important health, safety, environmental benefits for children, including reducing, again, the risk of obesity and chronic disease and pedestrian bicycle injuries, as well as improving the air quality. Whereas the need for Safe Routes to School projects is especially strong in urban areas like Columbus, which suffer from a disproportionate high incidence of both childhood obesity and chronic disease and pedestrian and bicycle injuries, and have often had inferior pedestrian and bicycled infrastructure. Whereas the Safe Routes to School projects make it safer and more convenient for all residents to walk and bike to destinations, further promoting public health. Whereas now therefore be it resolved that Columbus City Council affirms its commitment to active transportation and supporting Safe Routes to School infrastructure and non-infrastructure projects. Be it resolved by the Council of the Sea of Columbus that we do endorse the attached school travel plan and the Columbus Safe Routes to School program. You have the plan with you. I move for passage.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Alex, floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. So I wanted to just take a few moments to explain what Safe Routes to School is and what the travel plan is, very briefly. Safe Routes to School generally focus on two different aspects, infrastructure and non-infrastructure, and both of these aspects are to alleviate the barriers, any barriers that might be to biking and walking to school. Social equity, it should be added, is central to the plan and also central to Safe Routes to School itself. So the school travel plan is a documentation of the school's district's intentions to promote active transportation. It is also a requirement for further Ohio Department of Transportation funding requests. The Columbus City Schools District-wide Travel Plan began the process back a little bit late in 2013. It was a collaborative effort between both city departments and external organizations. It created a list of countermeasures, so the solutions to the barriers to biking and walking to school, and prioritized the implementation of those countermeasures. We also performed a health impact assessment on the travel plan. And the Columbus District-wide School Travel Plan was the first to use a health impact assessment, and a health impact assessment looks at a planned policy or process to make sure that health and social equity are entailed in the plan. And for this, we looked at school demographics, economic demographics, social demographics to determine 15 focus schools for the plan. So how does Safe Routes to School impact schools? It has been shown to raise attendance and lower tardiness, also raise academic achievement. It gives students the opportunities for mentorships and leadership and empowers them as well by allowing them to transport themselves to school. Also, positive socialization can be a result of Safe Routes to School. It allows us to do community engagement on a neighborhood level and also promotes wellness, of course, with physical activity. And how does it impact the community? How does Safe Routes to School impact the community at large? It can help reduce traffic congestion, the environmental impacts of transportation. It can overcome the barriers of crime and violence that some students face walking to school. It can also promote traffic safety, build a sense of community, and improve the active transportation built environment. And finally, I'd like to mention that this was a collaborative effort, especially between public health and public service, both with the non-infrastructure or the programming side, which I handle, and then the infrastructure side, which Maria handles. And Public Services is using this plan to prioritize infrastructure projects on a citywide scale.
Maria, do you have any comments you want to make?
Just here to answer any questions, if there were any, in addition to what he talked about.
Well, I just want to say thank you for the hard work that you have put into this project and that it will influence in terms of us and our capital projects, ensuring that our children have safe routes to school and improving our infrastructure. And I'm sure that I see the Columbus School Board President Gary Baker, I think Mary Jo Hudson walked in the room, and certainly I'm sure they appreciate the work of Columbus Public Health and the Department of Public Service in ensuring that their children get to their destination safely. So thank you for your hard work on this plan.
Thank you.
And thank you.
I want to recognize two individuals in this room. We have Christian Bush, which is Dave Bush's son, and his friend Sam Berry are here tonight observing a council meeting as part of the requirements for their government class at the Lenworth Alternative Program in Worthington. You're going to see your father at heart at work here tonight, so thank you for being here. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Any comments from our elected officials? Auditor Dorian? City Attorney Pfeiffer?
This time I request that the following ordinances be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda. Veterans Affairs, 303C-3037-2015. Are there any other requests from members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, we have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the City Clerk. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee Ordinance is 2859, 2923, and 2931-2015. Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance is 2928-2015. Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 3044-2015. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 2560, 2773, 2789, 2790, 2813, 2816, 2824, 2835, 2836, 2858, 2874, 2876, 2879, 2880, 2881, 2882, 2884, 2893, 2895, 2902, 2948, and 2960-2015. Development Committee Ordinance is 2906, 2934, 2938, 3057, 3112-2015. Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 2854-2015. Rules and Reference Committee Ordinance is 2905-2015. zoning committee Ordinance is 2760, 2976, 2977, 2985, 3046, 3052, 3062, 3069, and 3080-2015.
Thank you. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Finance Committee Ordinance is 2674, 2891, 2909, 2919, 2947, 3030-2015. Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance is 2928-2015. Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 3044-2015. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 2560, 2773, 2789, 2790, 2813, 2816, 2824, 2835, 2836, 2858, 2874, 2876, 2879, 2880, 2881, 2882, 2884, 2893, 2895, 2902, 2948, and 2960-2015. Development Committee Ordinance is 2906, 2934, 2938, 3057, 3112-2015. Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 2854-2015. Rules and Reference Committee Ordinance is 2905-2015. zoning committee Ordinance is 2760, 2976, 2977, 2985, 3046, 3052, 3062, 3069, and 3080-2015.
Thank you. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Finance Committee Ordinance is 2674, 2891, 2909, 2919, 2947, 3030-2015. Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance is 2920, 2945, 2959, 2973, and 3011-2015. Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 2758, 2917, 2965, 2967, 2979, 2981, 2982, 2983, and 3054-2015. Public Safety Committee Ordinance is 2601, 2953, 2984, 3000, 3006, and 3007-2015. Public Utilities Committee Resolution 264X-2015. Ordinance is 2697, 2737, 2742, 2745, 2767, 2799, 2823, 2878, 2897, 2946, 2971-2015. Development Committee Ordinance is 2901, 2921, 2935, 2937, 2995, 2996, 2997, 3001, 3002, 3003, 3016, 3017, 3038, 3039, 3050, 3051-2015. Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 2802 and 2957-2015. Administration Committee Ordinance is 2871 and 2962-2015. Environment Committee Ordinance is 2818, 2980, 3015-2015. Technology Committee Ordinance is 2696, 2783, 2860, 2883, 2900-2015. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0182 and A0183-2015.
Thank you. We do have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening. Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins? Mr. Wilkins, welcome to council chambers. If you'd come forward to the podium and share your name, address, any organizations you represent, and I believe that you've signed up to speak against 3051-2015.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. The chairman is solely vacant in the neighborhood property in North Linden area. Let me just tell you why I'm against this, several reasons. The property was built in 1910, or 1477, or Arlington Avenue. The city had took this over. I feel like there's too many rental property in North Linden area. How began this vacant stuff has left untouched and revitalized. I'm against this for four reasons only. The whole block, Arlington, Myrtle, and Genesee, is nothing but rental property, rental property up and down the block. I would like to see something else to be done with that property or a homeowner to occupy that property. Unfortunately, the property has sat vacant for several years, several time after time after time. Other property has been demoed in North Linden area, and there's not enough homeowner occupancy of property that's still standing. We have other property in the Linden area that's been sit revitalized and untouched for quite some time, and also commercial property. But again, I would like to see something else done with 1477 or Arlington Avenue, not to be a rental property in the area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Are there any questions or comments from Mr. Wilkins from council members? Director Shoney, any additional information regarding 3051-2015 you can share?
Thank you, President Ginter, members of council. No additional specific information. It is a challenge that Mr. Wilkins identifies rightly so, that finding the right balance between rental and homeownership in different neighborhoods. We have had this property for a while. We have had it marketed for a while. We think this is a great opportunity to save a building. Obviously, we would prefer to have homeownership, but when the market is dictating that we have rental, we would rather see this building saved rather than see it deteriorate further.
Thank you, Director. Any additional questions for the Director, council members? There isn't any further discussion or questions regarding the consent agenda. I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions. Sir Second, clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
Consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Welcome back, Madam Chair.
Thank you, President Ginter. I also want to say thank you to Councilmember Klein and Councilmember Ryan in my absence for reading by legislation, so I appreciate your support, so thank you. First ordinance I have in Finance is ordinance 2856-2015, is to authorize the director of the Department of Finance and Management to execute those documents necessary to enter into a lease agreement with the North Market Development Authority and to authorize the city auditor to establish a sub-fund and to declare an emergency. In 1992, the city acquired the real property to house a renovated and expanded North Market and to replace the existing market building located at 29 Spruce Street. An ordinance in 1995 enacted by Columbus City Council, the city and the North Market Development Authority entered into a lease agreement for a 20-year term period. This current lease agreement expires December 31 of 2015, thus necessitating the need for a new lease agreement to allow the North Market to continue operating. The North Market is a popular destination for Columbus residents and tourists and attracts about 1 million visitors per year. This legislation authorizes the director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter to a new lease agreement with the North Market Development Authority. This ordinance authorizes the city auditor to establish a sub-fund and fund, not 294, into which rent proceeds from the lease will be placed. These proceeds will be used solely for capital costs related to repair and replacement of interior and exterior building components and for equipment associated with the building that has reached the end of its useful life. Deputy Director Bush, any other comments regarding this legislation?
Councilwoman Tyson, I think you characterized it accurately. This initially will be a five-year lease with two five-year renewal options thereafter, so for a total of 15 years. And the lease essentially follows the guidelines and the provisions we used, coming to you for the Reeb School, for example, and also for the Neighborhood Health Center system, so they're fundamentally the same. Thank you.
If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2955-2015, is to authorize the city auditor to amend existing contracts with Tyler Technologies, Inc., and Crowe Horrath, LLP, and to enter into professional service consulting contracts for the additional implementation and maintenance costs and professional services and computerized systems necessary to deploy the Dynamics AXDAX financial management system to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to $2,351,883 from the auditor bond fund and to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. Ordinance number 1077, 2013, authorize the city auditor to enter into a contract with Tyler Technologies, Inc., for the implementation and supportive services related to the deployment of our new financial systems plan. All within this, and within financial systems, specifically Microsoft Dynamics AX 2012 for public sector Dynamics AX. The contracted amounts included a Tyler hosted solution for Dynamics, Dynamic AX and funds all within the original budget and are now needed for the expanded implementation and maintenance costs to be approved for the expenditure, and the original budget was $10 million. And so I can tell you that this financial management system that we have went through an extensive process before this company was selected for the City of Columbus. And the Evaluation Committee comprised of cross-functional stakeholders, the city auditor's office, the Department of Finance and Management, the purchasing office, the treasurer's office, and the Department of Technology. The city auditor requires the ability to contract, the reason we're asking to waive competitive bidding is that the city auditor requires the ability to contract with any various vendors. The city auditor has attempted to name all potential vendors, but there may be times where it is not possible, and so we're asking for the waive of competitive bidding. And this would be the $2 million I just mentioned would be the final payment of this financial management system. Auditor Dorian, any other comments on it?
Well, Madam Chair and all council members, you stated it very, very well. This is a major effort by not only the auditor's office, but Purchasing Division, Finance Department, and so forth. The two firms mentioned in the ordinance were successful bidders in phase one. We obviously want to continue with them. The conclusion of the effort is scheduled for the year 2016. Don't want to give you an exact date yet, but it'll be in 2016. And other contracts which are not yet completed would be tagged on to some of the state contracts where bids were taken for different programming services and so forth. So I ask your support for this ordinance, and I thank you.
Thank you, Auditor Dorian. Seeing no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. The next ordinance in Finance is 2958-2015. It is to authorize the finance and management director to modify the ordinance 1455-2015 and the contract with Champion Pest and Termite Control, LLC, for pest control services to waive the applicable competitive bidding requirements of the City Code 329 and to declare an emergency. I'm going to ask Deputy Director Bush to share information about this legislation.
Councilwoman Tyson, members of council, we had come to you some time ago, as you indicated in your initial comments, with an ordinance to authorize contracts with two pest control companies. One of those two companies has not performed well and is, in a sense, in default. What this ordinance is doing is amending the previous ordinance you passed last year and naming all of the line items to go to the other firm, and then we will pursue the default provisions with the company that we feel has failed to live up to the expectations of the contract.
Thank you, Deputy Director Bush. I move for passage.
Harden Klein, Page, Paley, Ryan, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number 3029-2015, is to amend the 2015 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund, to authorize the finance and management director to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Galan, Inc., for the renovation of North Front Street Garage facade located at 98 through 102 North Front Street, to authorize expenditure of $1,750,000 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund and to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code 329 and to declare an emergency. On this legislation, formal bids were solicited, and the city received three bids on this legislation. The lowest bid is a company that we're looking to receive this contract. The purpose of this project is to renovate and restore the facade on the entire west elevation along Front Street and the west half of the south elevation along West Elm Street. The scope of work will include installation of new granite, sandstone, and brick on these exterior elevations. Additionally, the storefront glass and framing of the wellness center, the security lobby area, and the print room will be replaced. The project, this project will address any ongoing deterioration of the garage facade, which was originally constructed in 1928. This project was presented to and approved by the Downtown Commission at its May 8 of 2015 meeting. Deputy Director Bush, would you please share why we're going to waive competitive bidding?
Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson, members of council. When we received the bids for this project, the Gallon Company did not name a pre-qualified subcontractor for some minor electrical work that's also a part of the project. That electrical work represents approximately eight percent, or a little under $150,000 in value in the project. As you know, the new 329 code requires that major or lead contractors and their licensed sub be pre-qualified. And so because they're not, we're asking that council waive the competitive bidding provisions. Failure for us to do so would probably have led us to award to the second low bid, which is approximately $600,000 higher. We didn't think that was a prudent thing to recommend to the council. We've also gone back to the Gallon Corporation and asked that they pick from the city's list of pre-qualified electrical subs, one of those contractors, and they have. So we recommend that council waive the provisions of competitive bidding and award this final major phase renovation to this particular garage we've acquired it some years back, and this is the last major renovation in order for us to fully stack it and fill it as many city employees would like us to do.
Are there any questions from my council colleagues? I know that we're working hard to work with all of our vendors. I know with the change and the changes that we've made to, in the bidding process, we're still working with all of our businesses to make sure that they can comply with all the new changes. But I certainly know that we don't want to spend $600,000 more, and we move this project forward. So no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. I'd now like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you. I have ordinance 2961-2015 is to authorize the Board of Health to extend a revenue contract with the Franklin County Children's Services for the provision of public health nursing services in the amount not to exceed $314,000 and to authorize the appropriation of $314,000 to the Health Department and the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. Columbus Public Health has maintained a revenue contract with the Franklin County Children's Services for the provision of nursing services to children under their care by assigning public health nurses to FCCS Intake and Investigation Department. The FCCS contract is for 2.6 individuals, public health nurses for medical intake assessments and investigations. The public health nurses will perform health assessments of children, make home visits with intake staff, and provide nursing consultation and training. They will interpret medical reports and to help develop treatment plans for families referred to for FCCS. We're asking to enhance this contract by .4, so means we have three people with this contract, to be able to work with their track, recording and tracking the immunizations of the children, and so that they, we will now have a new program, a new database that will track this. And due to the increased need of those services, we're asking for additional staffing, so we'll have three people that will be working with Franklin County Children's Services. I move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. And the last ordinance I have is 2963-2015 is to authorize the Board of Health to enter into revenue contracts with Franklin County Children's Services for $265,000, the National Youth Advocate Program for $15,000, and the Buckeye Ranch, Inc., doing business as Permanent Family Solutions Network for $15,000 for the continuation of the Family Ties Program, which helps reduce child abuse and neglect, and to authorize the appropriation of $295,000 to the Health Department and the Health Department's Grants Fund for the Family Ties Program and to declare an emergency. Columbus Public Health desires to continue its relationship, to continue the Family Ties Program with a revenue contract with Franklin County Children's Services. The purpose of this continued revenue contract is to provide services that will reduce the risk of child abuse and neglect in Franklin County. The services that Columbus Public Health will provide will be case management, public health nurses, social workers, and respite workers. In addition, families receive nursing and social work assessments, maternal depression and domestic violence screens, child development screens, education, respite care services, and linkage to community services. The average length of stay for this program for families, four to six months. And from January 1st to October 31st of this year, 71 families have been served, and that has been with 229 nursing visits, 234 social work visits, and 338 hours of respite. Again, similarly, they will do these same programs for Buckeye Ranch and the National Youth Advocate Program. So it's really great that we have these relationships with Columbus Public Health and Franklin County Children's Services to be able to ensure that our children and the families get the best care possible to move forward. So I ask for my colleagues to approve of this ordinance. Move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Harden chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. This evening in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance 2933-2015 to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer funds and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, and to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer funds between the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund and the Fed State Highway Engineering Fund, to appropriate funds within the Federal State Highway Engineering Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Shelley and Sands, Inc., for the intersection improvements Gender Road at Refugee Road, PID 90241 project, and to authorize the expenditure of $5,719,466.44, or so much thereof as may be necessary from the Fed State Highway Engineering Fund, to pay for the contract and declare an emergency. This is a large infrastructure project for the intersection of Gender Road and Refugee Road. As a result of this project, we'll be widening both roads, resurfacing, installing traffic signals, upgrading water lines, sewer sewers, and other projects. Additionally, residents will see improvements at Gender and Upper Ridge, Refugee and Countryview, and Refugee and Long Road. So these improvements will reach beyond the actual intersection to improve the quality of travel in the general area. This is an important infrastructure improvement and investment for a very, very busy and widely traveled part of this city. Director Davies, do you have any additional comments? There are no questions or comments from my colleagues. I move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
President Ginter, if I'm all right with you, I would like to turn the committee over to Councilmember Ryan, who will read 3044-2015.
On 3044-215, and that's the Point Dexter Village plat. To accept the title of Point Dexter Village from Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority by Brian Brown, Chief Development Officer, owner of the platted land.
Harden. Klein. Page. Paley.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Tyson.
Same.
President Ginter.
Okay, I would move for passage then of 3044-215.
Harden. Klein. Page. Paley.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Tyson.
Same.
President Ginter.
Anything else, Councilmember Harden?
That's all in Public Service and Transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. First, in Public Safety, 2915-2015, to amend the 2015 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Public Safety Geo Bonds Fund, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to style his purchase orders from previously established universal term contracts with Suffolk Corporation and Custom Fleet and Autobody, Inc., for fire engine repairs, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish a contract with W.W. Williams for an engine replacement, to authorize the expenditure of $134,314.86 from the Public Safety Geo Bonds Fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and declare an emergency. Deputy Director Jean Gardella, could you opine on the waiving competitive bidding provisions?
Yes. President Ginter, Chairman Klein, members of council, this ordinance authorizes approximately $135,000 in capital funds to repair three fire apparatus that still have quite a bit of useful life for us. The waiver of competitive bidding is for W.W. Williams only. Fleet Management currently has contracts with Suffolk Corporation and Custom Fleet and Autobody, and they will be doing autobody repairs on two vehicles, and then W.W. Williams will do an engine repair on engine three. And we appreciate council's consideration of this. Again, all three of these vehicles will have useful life in them, and we'll give them back on the road as soon as we can. I appreciate you entertaining this ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
2968-2015, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into one contract for the option to purchase division of firework and dress uniforms and associated services to waive the applicable competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, to authorize the expenditure of $1 to establish the contract from the general fund and to declare an emergency.
Yes. President Ginter, Chairman Klein, members of council, again, the waiver for this one is for Gall's uniform, formerly known as Roy Taylor. They have been the uniform supplier for fire for a number of years. They also are the only vendor that can supply all the requirements and meet the specifications that fire needs to supply their membership with these uniforms, which essentially includes a place for our quartermaster and also a warehouse of supplies that makes it much more efficient for these uniforms to be distributed to fire personnel. The purchasing office negotiated this contract with them on the specification, and we, obviously, we would like to move forward entering into contract with them. Thank you.
Any concerns, council members? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Moving on, Utilities. 2486-2015, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into professional engineering agreement with Chester Engineers for the Blueprint Columbus Kent Fairwood Area Project, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $1,799,990.29 from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund, the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,799,990.29 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund and to amend the 2015 capital improvements budget. Any questions or comments about this blueprint project? I move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
2772-2015, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a planned modification of the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with C.D.M. Smith of the Dublin Road Water Plant UV Disinfection Project for the Division of Water, to authorize a transfer of expenditure of $1,791,000 from the Water Works Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund and to authorize an amendment to the 2015 capital improvements budget. We've talked about the UV disinfection project on occasion here, and this is a planned modification for that project. Any questions or comments about this water purity project? Thank you, Councilmember Harden. I move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
2775-2015, to authorize the city auditor to transfer $1,266,911 between object levels within the sewer system operating fund and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director O'Grady?
President Ginter, Chair Klein, members of council, this legislation just moves appropriation from services to materials and supplies and capital outlay to cover the division's projected needs through the passage of the 2016 operating budget.
Any questions or comments for Deputy Director O'Grady? I move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Finally, in Utilities, 2776-2015, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Lining Liner for the Blueprint Miller Kelton Lining Project, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $4,930,657.90 from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $4,930,657.90 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, to amend the 2015 capital improvements budget, and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director O'Grady, could you talk about what exactly a lining project is?
Sure. President Ginter, Chair Klein, members of council, this is in the Miller Kelton neighborhood. This is part of our blueprint project as well. This is consisting of rehabilitating about 50,000 linear feet, which is about nine and a half miles of eight-inch through 48-inch sewers, using a cured-in place where we actually line it with like a plastic, plus also manhole rehabilitation and other work as necessary.
Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
On to Development. 269X-2015, to declare the necessity of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District and declare an emergency. Director Shoney.
Thank you, Chairman Klein, President Ginter, members of council. This is a companion piece of legislation. This is the third, or second of three, excuse me, pieces of legislation associated with the commonly, what is commonly known as an ESID for the PNC Plaza Building to help them do energy improvements. We discussed this at our last council meeting, I think, in a little bit more detail.
And if folks recall that the city deserves as a statutory entity that approves the Special Improvement District, the city's not on the hook for any financial obligations.
That is absolutely correct.
Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
2907-2015, request the table indefinitely.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
2908-2015, request the table indefinitely.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
3012-2015, to create a tax increment financing area on certain parcels of real property in the area of 161 and Hamilton Road to be known as the Dublin Grahamville West TIF, to declare improvements to those parcels to be of public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, to declare an emergency. Director Shoney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, President Ginter, members of council. This is a piece of legislation associated with the project, again, that I've discussed at council before. This is the Hamilton 161 project. This is a TIF for the office portion of that development. The remainder of the development has, is already under a series of other TIFs, but this will be used to support our infrastructure development out in that area as well as onsite improvements.
Any questions or comments for Director Shoney? I move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Rules and reference. 2635-2014, to amend Columbus City Code Sections 110501, 110521, 114719, 116301, and to add new sections 110522, 114701, and 114724, to ensure consistent definitions and terminology of the low-income customer discount and the senior citizen customer discount within the respective divisions of the Department of Public Utilities, the Division of Sewage and Drainage, the Division of Water, and the Division of Power. Deputy Director O'Grady.
President Ginter, Chair Klein, members of council, all this is is some cleanup language that will make all of our programs consistent throughout our divisions. This does not change eligibility requirements whatsoever for our low-income and our senior discount programs.
Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
And finally, 3009-2015, requesting to table indefinitely.
Harden Klein Page, Paley Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Education Committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. This evening in education, we have ordinance 2752-2015, to authorize the Director of Education to enter into contracts with Columbus City Schools and Hilltop Preschool, which are Ohio Department of Education's Early Childhood Expansion Initiative Providers, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code and to authorize the expenditure of up to $968,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. I would like to briefly ask Director Johnson to speak on this ordinance. Again, I would urge my colleagues to support it. We are excited about the continuing efforts of the Department of Education. We are excited about the continuing efforts of the Department of Education and the work to provide quality pre-K education to our three- and four-year-olds across the city. Director Johnson?
President Ginter, Chair Page, thank you, members of city council. This ordinance will allow the city to partner with the Ohio State, Ohio Department of Education's Early Childhood Expansion Program. The state provides for half-day programs, and with city funding, we can make those full-day programs instead of half-day programs for four-year-olds. So with this funding, we're going to be able to serve an additional 350 students. So it makes for this year, we'll have served a total of 750 students and 1,000 students over the two years that we, two school years we've been doing this. We're asking that competitive bidding be waived because the providers both meet the requirements of the grant with the Ohio Department of Education, and they do not participate in any other contracts with the Education Department.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments for the Director? I would like to ask also Sandy Donald, the Director of Teaching and Learning from Columbus City Schools, to come forward and also acknowledge that we have Alicia Gillison, Chief Academic Officer with Columbus City Schools, in support of this ordinance, as well as School Board President Gary Baker and School Board Member Mary Jo Hudson. Thank you both for attending today and for your support.
Good evening, Council President Ginter, Chairwoman Page, and members of city council. My name is Sandy Donald, and I have the distinct pleasure of serving as the Executive Director for the Office of Teaching and Learning with Columbus City Schools. On behalf of our Superintendent, Dr. Dan Good, and members of our Board of Education, I would like to extend a heartfelt thank you for your consideration of Ordinance 2752-2015 that will expand access for a high-quality pre-kindergarten experience for more of our city's youngest learners. There's a breadth of research that proves a quality pre-kindergarten experience is critical to children's long-term success. Research suggests that preschool graduates have higher vocabularies, better math skills, and higher social skills than their peers. A quality pre-kindergarten experience provides children appropriate exposure to language development, which is the first step to literacy. It's especially important for students from low-income families. Without preschool, those students enter kindergarten oftentimes behind, and many never catch up. Currently, we have more than 1,700 students enrolled in our pre-kindergarten programs. However, we still have a waiting list of more than 450 families. Four hundred and fifty families on a waiting list is too many, and we know the need is even greater, especially when you consider that we welcome more than 4,500 kindergarten students to school each year. Columbus City Schools was awarded an Early Childhood Education Expansion Grant from the Ohio Department of Education. This will allow, city dollars will allow us to convert part-time pre-kindergarten classes to full-time classes for up to 330 additional students. That's 330 more four-year-olds who will have access to a high-quality, developmentally-appropriate full-day program, which will increase their chances of succeeding not only in school but in life. Unique to our effort, we've created an expanded inclusion model of pre-kindergarten learning with special-needs preschool children learning in a collaborative environment with their typically developing peers. This encourages greater academic outcomes, increased appreciation and acceptance of individual differences, and peer role models for academic, social, and behavior skills. To benefit from preschool, however, it must be high-quality. Columbus is home to more than 100 pre-kindergarten teachers, who all have received specialized training in early childhood education. Another component of a high-quality program is high-parent engagement. At Columbus City Schools, parents and extended family members are an integral part of our program. Parents are welcomed and respected as the child's first and most important teacher, and they are supported in their efforts to extend learning at home. Our teachers, building administrators, and parents are excited about this life-changing opportunity. Parents can call (614) 365-4011, or visit our Central Enrollment Center located on the Fort Hays Campus at 430 Cleveland Avenue for additional information. In addition, they can visit our website at www.ccsoh.us. In closing, investing in high-quality pre-kindergarten yields benefits for children, schools, and communities. I would like to thank the City of Columbus on behalf of our Superintendent, Board of Education, faculty, and staff for their continued partnership and support as we strive to ensure that each student is highly educated, prepared for leadership and service, and empowered for success as a citizen in a global community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Donald. Are there any questions from our colleagues?
Yes, Councilwoman Tyson?
Thank you. I don't have a question. I just want to say to you, Councilmember Page, and certainly the work that was done on that with the education, Columbus Education Commission, with President Ginter, the mayor, I said on it, and so certainly Mary Jo, but just really do appreciate it to Director Johnson, this, the money is this $968,000, it's certainly dollars that are well-spent. I know that, just for the reason that you stated, we want to make sure that every, every individual, every child has the opportunity to get the very best education and the best start to move forward in their lives. And we know that when you have a good education, that you're able to move forward and have a successful life, but it all begins when you are in three and four years old. So just appreciate you, Councilmember Page, for this, moving this legislation forward. I appreciate the work of you, Dr. Johnson, certainly of the Board of Education, and specifically for you and the work that you're doing in the Columbus Public Schools, because we will now be able to pay, children will be able to have successful lives and not be spending money, and for children being in other places when they become an adult as opposed to working. So just appreciate this work that you're doing, and that more kids have these opportunities. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Page.
Ms. Gillison, would you like to speak?
Good evening, council. President Gitter, Chairwoman Page, and members of city council, my presence here is an affirmation on behalf of our Superintendent, Dr. Dan Good, our Board President, Gary Baker, and our Board members, and it's a sincerest appreciation for your consideration for Ordinance Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you both for coming down and for the work that you're doing with our students in Columbus City Schools to make sure they are receiving a quality education. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions or comments on Ordinance 2752-2015, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. And the final ordinance in education is 2817-2015, and the purpose of this ordinance is to allow the Director of Education to modify some of the existing contracts that we have with early start Columbus providers that will align their service levels with the survey provider capacity, and also to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter, and the Administration Committee this evening. I have ordinance 2619-2015 to authorize the Director of City Council to enter into a contract with Lutheran Social Services for the provision of the High Benefit Bank Services at the Franklin County Courthouse, and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $65,000 from Public Safety Initiative Fund and to declare an emergency. I'd first like to remove this from the table.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
And would like to table this indefinitely.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
And I'd like to go back to page nineteen, where we have Ordinance 3037-2015 in Veterans Affairs, not Administration, which is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to make financial assistance available through the Better Municipal Care for Veterans Home Fund administered by the Housing Division, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $299,609.34 from the Housing Preservation Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of $15,768.91 from the Housing Preservation Fund, reimburse the General Fund or other funds for personal expense incurred, and to declare an emergency. This legislation will authorize us to give assistance available through the Better Municipal Care to allow financial assistance to eligible veterans that are homeowners, or homeowners with an eligible veteran whose permanent address is in the same house as the homeowner, and the money will provide monies for necessary and prioritized home improvements. These are, this is for people that have served our country, and it also will help improve our housing stock. If there are no questions or comments, I will move for passage.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
That's all we have in Administration and Veterans Committee this evening, and thank you, President Ginter.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Our next committee is the Environment Committee. Councilmember Ryan chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, President. This, this ordinance under Environment is 2925-2015, is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a brownfield grant agreement with Burwell Investments LLC for corrective action in physical Phase II work at 115 East Fifth Avenue pursuant to the Green Columbus Fund Program, to authorize expenditure of up to $80,000 from the Northland and Other Acquisitions Fund and declare an emergency. Are there, Director Shoney, do you have any discussion on it?
President Ginter, Chair Ryan, this grant is to help with Phase II environmental assessments for a site that is at Fifth Avenue and Summit. Many of you will know it as the old taxi company site. It is being redeveloped for housing. The developers are actually doing a very nice job on the project. They've done a lot of work to make sure that it fits with the neighborhood, and we're excited to partner with them on this.
Any other comments or questions? I move for passage of Ordinance 2925-2015.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
May I move on to Technology?
Please.
Ordinance 2490-2015 is to authorize Director Department of Technology to enter into a three-year agreement with Cornerstone On Demand Inc. for the purchase of a hosted learning management system and professional services, to assist in implementing that system, and to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to authorize expenditure of $161,892 from the Department of Technology Internal Services Fund and declare an emergency. Are there any questions for Director? If not, I move for the passage of Ordinance 2490-2015.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
That's all I have in Technology.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. I know that Councilmember Tyson wanted to share an announcement. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, President Ginter. Tomorrow in council chambers, December the eighth, at four o'clock, we'll have the third-quarter review hearing, and then immediately following, we will have the hearing from the Directors on the Mayor's 2015, 2016 budget. And so for the viewing and listening audience, please either come down or tune in to hear the details of the Mayor's 2016 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Anything else to come before council this evening? We do have three non-agenda speakers that will take momentarily, and we will reconvene for zoning at 6:30. Anything else to come before council? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
We stand adjourned, and we'll take non-agenda speakers momentarily. Regular meeting number fifty-six will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Second, clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Any first readings of thirty-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We will now go to the zoning committee. I chair that committee. All members serve on that committee. This evening in zoning, we have 2733-2015 to rezone 4956 Avery Road, 43016 being 101.77 plus or minus acres located on the east side of Avery Road, 900 plus or minus feet north of Hayden Run Road from R Rural District to CPD Commercial Plan Development, and LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential Districts. The applicant is DCR Commercial Development, care of Laura McGregor Comack, 300 East Broad Street, Suite 450, Columbus, Ohio, 432, 43215. Proposed use is commercial and multi-unit residential development. Development Commission recommended approval. City Department's recommendation is approval. Any questions, comments, discussion regarding this legislation? If not, first, I move to take from the table. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Taken from the table. Next, I move to amend as submitted to the clerk. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Amended as submitted to the clerk, and finally move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Passed. Next, we have 2734-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.02, R Residential District, 3312.21, landscaping and screening, 3312.272, parking setback line, 3312.39, striping and marking, 3312.41, access and circulation, 3312.43, required surface for parking, 3312.45, wheel stop device, 3312.49, minimum number of parking spaces required, and 3332.21B, building lines of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 5730 Hayden Run Road, 43016, to permit a commercial tractor and farm equipment dealer service facility with reduced development standards in the R Rural District. Applicant is DCR Commercial Development, care of Laura McGregor Comack, 300 East Broad Street, Suite 450, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. Proposed use is commercial tractor and farm equipment dealer service facility. City Department's recommendation is approval. First of all, move to take from the table. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Taken from the table. Next, I move to amend as submitted to the clerk. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Amended as submitted to the clerk, and finally move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Passed. And finally, this evening, we have 2479-2015 to amend Ordinance Number 1460-2015 passed June 22, 2015, for property located at 6,000 Riverside Drive, 43017, thereby amending the height district in Section Two and the commercial plan development text in Section Three as it pertains to building height. Any questions or comments? The City Department's recommendation is approval on this legislation. Any questions or comments regarding the legislation? If not, first, I move to waive second reading. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Second reading is waived, and finally move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
Passed. Are there anything else to come before zoning this evening? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Page, Pele Ryan Tyson, President Ginter.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.